I want to call the Election Commission meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Rafco?
Here.
Sisk?
Whitman?
Here.
Michael Angeli?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
And with that, clerk?
We are, as we discussed last Election Commission meeting, we needed to reconvene this evening to go over a couple of items just prior to the November election. The first item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the Election Commission meeting held on Monday, October 2nd.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the Election Commission meeting held on Monday, October the 2nd, 2017.
Court, your honor.
motion by Commissioner Sisk, supported by Commissioner Evans to approve the minutes. Do you need a roll caller?
I do.
Yes. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Rafco?
Yes.
Sisk?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Michael Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
Under commission action, we have three items that we will need an individual vote for each one.
Okay, thank you.
So we have one list which shows you all of the election inspectors that have been assigned to the precincts for the November 7th election, including the chair and co-chair. We also have on that list the approval of the absent voter board inspectors and the receiving board members. So if you have, take a quick look at it, and as you can see there, we have the parties. We have an even distribution, as even as we can, this year, and I just need approval of all three of those. So first, we'll do the approval of the election inspectors.
Your honor, if I may?
Yes.
Your honor, make a motion that we, motion to approve the election inspectors.
Court. Motion by Commissioner Sisk, supported by Commissioner Evans to accept the election inspectors. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Rafco?
Yes.
Sisk?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Michael Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
All right, the next item will be the approval of absent voter board inspectors. And I will need a motion.
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Court. motion by Commissioner Rafco, supported by Commissioner Angeli, to accept the absentee voter board inspectors. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Rafco?
Yes.
Sisk?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Michael Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Finally, we will need the approval of the receiving board members.
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Evans, supported by Commissioner Rafco, to accept the receiving board members as listed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Rafco?
Yes.
Sisk?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Michael Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
And all of those names will be forwarded to the respective political parties per state law. The next item is clerk treasurer comments, and I have none this evening.
You.
Next item, any commissioner comments?
Any commissioner comments? I'm just pleased that you were able to work through. I know it's a challenge getting volunteers, but it's very well done, so I just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
I guess citizens' comments as well. This is the Election Commission meeting, which prepares us for the upcoming election, tasks and responsibilities and duties of the clerk treasurer. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn that meeting, your honor.
Court. motion by Commissioner Evans, supported by Commissioner Sisk. Endearment, I'll say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Very well. So we have that completed, and we have our work session. Let's, clerk, you need something further before we move on?
Nope. Thank you.
We have a council work session this evening, so I'm just going to turn it right over to Mr. Pastu. He has several items to review.
Thank you, mayor. First item we have is the Sawyer Homestead financial report for the period ending June 30th, 2017. I see the ladies over here, if they're ready to come up and do the presentation. I just got comfortable. They did receive the handout that was presented last week as well, so. The financial income statement, yeah. Let's just focus on the annual, that report that you had, I can forward that on to them afterwards, so.
Good evening, your honor, members of council and staff. Thank you for the privilege of appearing before you. Things are really hopping over at the Sawyer House. We're delighted to be able to make an annual report to you. On October the 22nd, as we've mentioned to you before, we're going to be having a beard and mustache contest. And incidentally, the ladies are included. If you'd like to make a jolt, something or other, you're welcome to come and participate. And if you don't want to participate, just come and have a good time. Our own General Custer, Steve Alexander, will be the lead judge, and there'll be a half a dozen others, and we have prizes for the winners in various areas, and we'll have a lot of fun with it to boot. We have a basket weaving class on October the 16th. If anyone is interested in going, Bev Heck is leading that. Call the house for reservations. And the daughter, Nancy DeGraff, total daughter of the American Revolution and the daughters of 1812, are members of the Sawyer Homestead because Jenny Sawyer was descendants of both areas, as many of us were. And they have published a book that you can get at the Sawyer House. You can call about purchasing one, they're $12, and there are a great deal of information about the Sawyers, Jenny, and what's going on in Monroe, and about important gentlemen and ladies that are buried here. We have an interesting calendar of events, October the 16th, basket weaving, the 22nd, the mustache contest. October the 23rd to the 27th, we'll be having a house party. It's cleanup time, if you want to come, you're welcome to come and help. We've put the gardens to bed for the year. And November the 13th and 17th, that whole week, we will be decorating with different group organizations and our own. You're welcome to come and help if you like it to watch. And the city council has this luncheon there, I'm not sure what date. November the 18th, we're announcing the lighting, the parade, lighting and parade downtown. December the 3rd, we have a Victorian high tea by a new member, she's putting that on. If you'd like to go, call for reservations, that's a Sunday. The following Sunday, December the 10th, we have our annual Christmas dinner. It'll be at 1:00, everybody's welcome, call for reservations. And it's happy birthday to all who've had birthdays in the year. We will be also having a number of other things cooking, but that will do for now. Since July 1st to October 15th, we've had 79 visitors to the house beyond what is the normal use. We have over 200 members that we mail to annually. We've had 224 volunteer hours in those few months, 25 parties, and 20 groups and organizations have utilized the house, and we've had two programs. We have a Facebook, you're welcome to look that up, there's a great deal of information on that. We are involved with the Monroe News, By Club News, the calendar and ads that we put in. You know the programs they put out that's like a booklet at different times for marriages and that type of thing? That's where we generally advertise. The RRCA, we have bought an ad in their annual program for several years. We are a member of the Chamber of Commerce, as we have been for a couple of years. We put an ad in the community players' activity, and we are on impact. And thanks to the gentleman behind me in the window, they've been very helpful. And we recommend that if anyone would like to join this Sawyer House, they're welcome, makes a good gift. And we will be decking the halls with something very special this year. The Reverend Bill Finley and Winnie have a wonderful antique Santa collection. And Bill died recently, unfortunately, and Winnie will be moving to Alaska to Anchorage to be with her son and grandson and daughter-in-law. So this will be your last chance to see this collection. We will be putting it up the whole second week of November as we decorate, and it's free to the public. And when you have your downtown activities, we will try to be available as long as we know it in advance, and anyone can call anytime for an appointment to come. When the city council has your luncheon there, it will be available to you. And at our tea and our Christmas dinner and whatever else we do, it will be there the entire month of December. And I don't know if you have any other questions about our activities, and Rosalie then will address the dollars and cents for us.
Thank you.
Any questions on the general activities?
We'll move into the financial, annual financial statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pascoe, our treasurer.
Hello, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. I'm the treasurer of the Sawyer Homestead on the board. And I think you all got a copy of the, this is the annual financial report. We prepared that a couple of months ago to have it ready for you. And they weren't all signed, but Mr. Pastu's copy is signed, I think, so we forgot to make the copy, have the signatures on before we made the copies. They are signed. And as you can see, we spent a lot more money than we took in, but that was because of the, it took us a while to get back on our feet after the fire. It's been two years since we've been in the building again, operating it. So, but now, these last two months, we have quite a few rentals and events, as Mrs. Meca noted, several things. But just in the last, for instance, last week, we had two, two days, we had classes there by a group, was quite successful. They rented for two whole days during the week. And then we had three events on the weekend that were private showers, et cetera. And so we are finally taking in as much money as we're putting out each month for our budget. And again, and we have no bills at present, as we pay them promptly upon receipt. And we did recently, I think within the last month, we received the grant from the, through, from the Monroe County, through the Historical Commission, was for our Founder's Day of last May. So that helped a lot. And if you have any questions about the annual financial report, I'm not a CPA or anything like that, so we do our best, and Sharon, our office manager, helps quite a bit. Thank you, advisor.
Any questions? Mr. Pastu, if you have any follow-up, or I know you had some additional follow-up or conversation with the Homestead group.
Yeah, the only thing I would like just to add is if, you know, before, you know, tonight's just kind of a brief presentation of it, if there's, we'd like to just have a balance sheet of what the assets that you have, and in the accounting end of it, for assets, fixed assets that you have, maybe it's difficult to put a value on some of those items, but if we could have that. I doubt, because you pay the bills on a regular basis, there's any outstanding liabilities, but
No.
but it would be helpful just to complete the financial report, to have that, and I may just bring it back at the next meeting for city council, just to accept, file that report.
Well, actually, I have with me copies of the August monthly financial, on our monthly financial, we put all our total assets on the bottom. So I will, I can pass that out for everybody. Give it to the show. That report does contain all our total value of all assets as of August 31st, and it's pretty much the same right now. It's a little bit more because we got our grant, but it's $25,132. Any more questions, or?
Comments or questions from the council? Counsel, Michael Angeli?
Your honor, just a question for, maybe the city manager to take a look at is, since the Sawyer House is a nonprofit, because they provide programming that's available to the entire community, sometimes at no charge, would they qualify for a participation in the city's community development block grant program?
I guess I haven't given that much consideration. I can certainly follow up on that question if we're in subsequent meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, one thing I forgot to mention, as to the caretaker's apartment that we have, we've scrubbed the rugs and waxed the kitchen floor, so everything looks very good in that aspect. And if we have someone that will come in and paint, we have a possible gentleman that might come in and do a little plaster work and paint, and that would be sufficient. It's really in good shape. Thank you.
Other questions from council? I mean, as Mr. Pastu said, he's going to put with the report received today, along with the financial statement together, and probably bring it back to council here at the next meeting.
Just as a perfunctory, I don't want to say perfunctory, but just for accepting and filing the annual report as our contract has, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, ladies. Vince, your next item, please.
Excuse me, sir. May I add something briefly that you might be interested in? We have several organizations that are making annual donations to us, the Thrift Shop Association of Monroe, the Monroe Women's Club, and the River Rays and Chapter of Archaeology, and probably the AAUW. And we received a very large memorial in honor of Joan Croix and for Mrs. Patricia Vincent. She was one of our very first supporters at the House. We are preparing rack cards that you'll be seeing around, and I think you probably passed around the business cards that Rosalie developed. So we're trying to get our name out there a little more and having a good time with it. And thank you for the privilege of being a partner with the city.
Thank you.
See y'all soon.
Vince, next item, please.
If I could have Terry Beamsly with the Battlefield Foundation just provide the city council with an update.
Great, thank you. Good evening, I'm happy to provide an update with the progress of the space analysis that's ongoing at the multi-sports complex. As you all know, we've contracted with an organization, the Collaborative, in, that is headquartered in Toledo. This particular project is being handled largely out of their Ann Arbor office, Keith Russo is our major contact there. And that contract includes consideration of a, producing a number of detailed design options for space use within the, within that facility. To that end, so far, what's been occurring is, for one thing, or for, first off, a provision of a number of pieces of information to the Collaborative, including things like the Heritage Corridor report, prior reports from other organizations that were done in earlier years regarding potential uses of the multi-sports complex, and other materials that help the Collaborative understand the, what's been going on so far in the history of that building, and also in the history of what the plans for the corridor and the visitor center are going to become. In addition to that, the Collaborative has sent a, an engineering team. I spent a day with them over at the multi-sports complex. That was slightly delayed because of the situation with the air quality conditions within the complex, which have since been corrected. But there were six engineers that came as part of their team. We had provided a building drawings to that group and to the Collaborative as a whole. Kudos to Patrick Lewis for chasing down a number of those drawings. It is a little more complex with the architectural drawings, because it was a build construct situation, so designed to build, and means that there, each individual subcontractor creates their own drawings. So you have a lot more drawings to coordinate in that particular circumstance. We were able actually to find drawings within the complex building itself, that pretty much completed that set. And kudos to the Collaborative, because they took those drawings and not only duplicated them for their own use, but provided us with scanned copies at no cost, which was very nice of them. And the engineers have gone through the building, and they are comparing the drawings to what they've actually found within the building. I'm pleased to note that informally, they indicated to me that, in fact, the building is very much as drawn, which is a very unusual circumstance when you're looking at a building of that age in particular. So that's a good sign. We are scheduled for a tour on Thursday, the 19th. We'll be taking members of the Collaborative on an extensive tour. They'll be meeting with Scott Bentley, will be essentially going through not just the corridor and the corridor plan, but also, they'll be getting information that many of you have had access to in your tours regarding the actual history of the area and what the visitor center is going to be covering at that time, and they are in the process of beginning to draw up a schedule for individual meetings with the various stakeholders in that future use of the multi-sports complex. So that's where we are right now, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Questions from council, for Terry at this time?
Yeah.
Terry, when do you think the study would be complete?
We are hoping that the study will be completed by the end of this year, and we'll have to see how that progresses. Like I said, there were some minor delays. Oh, another thing that I neglected to mention is that because the National Park Service will eventually be a tenant in that building, the Department of the Interior requires that the National Park Service maintain a separate and secure IT internet connection, for example, and the IT specialist from Sleeping Bear, who is the individual that services this area, we have also been through the building with him, so that he can determine how that's going to be set up as well.
Great, thank you.
Yes, your honor. Terry? What was the date of the tour?
The tour is the 19th.
Okay, thank you.
And if anyone wants to go on it, I do believe we have some spaces. It will be an all-day proposition, 8 to 4.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one more?
If I may, just if you could expand upon the battlefield protection grant that you're working on, as well as the FEMA grant that I know that you and Mark are working on as well.
ABPP first. We had, with the American Battlefield Protection Program grant, what we did was to get funding that would produce for us a series of studies, the result of which would not only satisfy some of the criteria of the American Battlefield Protection Program itself, which is very much about identifying properties that are related to historic battles and historic sites, and determining what properties need to be protected in terms of preventing further development or further disturbance of the battlefield sites. It is not limited to National Park Service properties, but very much concerned with properties that are associated. And in our case, the Battlefield Protection Plan Project deals with some of the areas that would be considered additional units of the National Park that we have here. And so those studies are intended to lead to plans in terms of how to collaborate with the jurisdictions that those areas that need protection might be worked out. And in this particular case, what we're producing are template MOUs that we'll be using with other jurisdictions and also with the city to help guarantee not only the protection of those areas that are considered to be vulnerable as a result of this study, but also those areas that we may want to include not just as specific units that belong to the National Park Service, but as units that the National Park Service is allowed to interpret through things like educational easements and other agreements of that nature. So Quinn Evans was retained to do that study, and they have just, within the last couple of days, sent us a draft report, which we're in the process of going through. Mark Cochran has been doing a yeoman's job on all of this, and he and I will be going through those reports shortly, and we'll be looking at the MOUs and putting together a plan, again, the template for a public information plan that would affect each of the jurisdictions that we may be dealing with, whether they be townships or other cities, is also being provided as part of that draft study. So we'll be taking a look at that and talking more about how we go about actually approaching those jurisdictions and implementing those MOUs. So that's where we're at with ABPP. We fully expect to be done with that project by the end of this year as well. And FEMA, okay. FEMA's been very interesting. You may or may not be aware of how the FEMA grant process works. In this case, what we're talking about is pre-disaster mitigation grants. And much to my surprise, at any rate, a round of those grants was announced at the end of August, beginning of September. We had until mid-September to provide a notice of intent to produce an application. FEMA actually only accepts applications from states, and so anyone who applies for a FEMA grant other than a state is a sub-applicant to that state. So as a result, the notice of intent went to the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan reviews the notices of intent, and they notify those that they feel are acceptable and have good potential when we receive that notification. And then we were given approximately a month to provide a full FEMA application to the state, which we've just finished. It went in on Friday. And that will now be reviewed by the state, the Department of Emergency Management, and they will determine what we need to do to round out that application. In some instances, they will assist us with some, with finishing some portions of the application. We've been in pretty much constant contact with both Mark Hammond, who is the emergency director for the county, as well as Matt Schnep, who is the individual in charge of the FEMA operation for the state. And they are at this moment reviewing our application to determine if they're going to move it forward, and what, in addition, we would have to do in order for it to be provided to the federal government. And the deadline for that, the completion of that application and submitting it to the federal government, it would be November the 14th. Mary Otts?
If I could just add on to it, you know, certainly we're optimistic with the FEMA grant, but we're also looking, as with any grant, there's local match requirements, and I know that there's been contact with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, going for another round of funding that would really cover most of our local match. We may have some modest amount that we may have to come up with, but clearly, you know, a few million dollars toward acquisition, demolition, the whole package, relocation, be something that the second round would, I think, be a lot easier than, and to follow than the first round. The first one's been a challenge, but a very good project. But no, I think good, we're optimistic on that with the work of Terry and Mark working on those two applications.
If I could add that through the hard work of both Mark and Land Matters, we made tremendous progress on the existing Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant, to the extent that the folks in grants management at the DNR have actively encouraged us to apply for another grant. So it's been a good experience.
Question.
John?
Terry, while you're up there, how many properties have you acquired from, with the first?
We have acquired, we actually have acquired six to date, and we have another 12 in queue, either closings actually being arranged, or the sales agreements signed, and things starting to kick out. So right now, we're looking at 18 when we're done with this next round, and we have other willing sellers. It just is all a matter of timing and the acquisition of additional match funds.
Just one last comment, if I may, mayor? You know, I will tell you, the first grant, and certainly with Terry's work, and certainly with Mark, and it's been remarkable. Most of the times you go into these projects with your local match already in line. We've been challenging to build that on the fly, and to compound it a little bit as well, is working with the MDNR, because this is actually one of the first land assemblies that they've been involved with. They're used to doing single parcel acquisitions. This is far more complicated than what they're typically, so they're, they've learned on the fly, and certainly a lot of hand-holding from Terry and Mark through the process, and I think they've gained a lot of trust and respect, which makes the second round application with FEMA and MDNR, I think, that much more optimistic, is a lot of hard work has went into setting the groundwork for some of the future acquisitions, so.
Very good. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Vince, next.
Next item, we've got a presentation regarding fire apparatus changes, Chief White and their, Brent Newsome, I don't know why I've drawn a blank.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager and staff, for giving us this opportunity. us this opportunity. I do want to apologize to the people who came before us. I think our computer here might have gotten in the way a little bit. Guess we probably could have planned that a little bit better, but just want to apologize about that. So before we start, just want to go over a little background on this. This has been about, oh, two and a half years in the work to get us to this point. Some, it's been some research, working on what's available, what our plan for the future is going to be, and future deployment. So if we go through here, this is just because of an overview of our current apparatus. Our fleet's composed of three fire engines, one ladder tower, one command echo unit, which is also a smaller SUV Explorer, one utility SUV, chief's SUV, and one utility car, and some watercraft. Of those, two of those are frontline engines. Those are what we use every day on a daily basis. Those are model years 2002, 2006. We have one reserve engine that's a year 2000. Our aerial tower is a year 2001. The average age of our fleet for fire apparatus that have pumping capability is almost 15 years old on there. Our Explorers are 2014. That command/echo unit has about 10,000 miles on it. Our chief's vehicle, the 2008, has approximately 92,000 miles on it. Our Suburban is a 99 with 94,000 miles on it. We have a Crown Victoria that has approximately 92,000 miles on it, and we have a 2004 ambulance with approximately 57,000 miles on there. The average age, those being 10.6 years. So what we propose is to replace our current Engine One with a 78-foot Quint. A Quint is a fire engine that has a ladder, but that ladder is smaller than a tower. It doesn't have a bucket on there. It's a little bit shorter. Our current tower's 100 feet long. This is 78 feet long. One of the advantages of a Quint is it gives you, essentially, it's a dual-purpose truck. It allows you to use a ladder as a ladder and aerial device as your first-run vehicle. The Quint's also smaller than the tower. It's a single axle. The last about three or four years, the increased engineering capabilities has reduced the size of these smaller aerial devices down to single axles, which has shortened them up quite a bit. That 78-foot Quint would be just slightly larger than our current Engine One in length. Height would actually be a little bit shorter. Second part of this would be replace our Engine Two that's at the West Side Station with a rescue engine. When they say rescue engine, that refers to a engine that has more compartment space than just kind of a standard engine. They just, it's not necessarily a larger vehicle. It's just a different engineering of the back part of it where all the compartmentation is. We would take our current Engine Two, remove that from frontline service, and have that be our reserve vehicle, and that would be renamed Engine Three. Reserve vehicle is essentially a vehicle that we use for great alarms if we have an incident that requires off-duty personnel to come in, or we have a vehicle that's out for maintenance. We'll put that reserve unit into service. Part of this would be to sell the aerial tower. In a timeline that, we'd want to do that immediately. That's something we've been talking about for a number of years. We had some discussions previously on this at the beginning of the year. Currently, with our deployment model, the aerial device is something that we aren't able to utilize in a timely fashion. It's been a vehicle that's been out of service for a fairly lengthy amount of time. We've had some issues with maintenance on it, and obviously, being fire apparatus, it requires specialized mechanic to work on it. And that person we use is in high demand. He's probably one of the best ones in the area, and get him in here is, you know, takes some scheduling. Part of this plan would be to sell our Engine Three, which is our reserve engine, and we'd do that at the delivery of a new engine. Sell Engine One at the delivery of a new Quint. The timeline for the whole plan would be approximately one year. It takes approximately 340 days, is what the factory says, to sign the contract and take delivery, because each, essentially, each vehicle is made to order. So you come in there, you have your own specs. They give the specs, review the cost, designs, then they put to manufacturing. So you're looking at almost a full year between the time you sign the contract and the time you receive the vehicle. And with this plan, too, one of the benefits with using a Quint would be able to reduce our fleet by one. So instead of having the three engines and an aerial device, we just go down to having three engines, and the aerial device would be on one of the engines. Here's a picture of our current Engine One. This is a custom cab, they call it. It's kind of was made to order. We designed this. It's the 2002, has 86,000 miles on it, and about 10,500 engine hours. Both engine hours are more of a measure of wear on the unit, because the mileage can be deceiving, because the vehicle sits and idles. So there's actually a multiplying factor on that. It does vary, but they usually use around 30 for fire apparatus. So that puts your actual mileage usage on this around the 300,000 mark. So that would be a true measurement if you were trying to compare this to a personal vehicle. Some of the challenges we run into with this vehicle, it's been a, it's been a very good truck. We've been pretty happy with our manufacturer on here. But we did get it in 2002. Some of our deployment models changed, staffing has changed, our fleet's gotten smaller, so we've been forced to have this vehicle have more and more equipment on it than it was designed for. And we've had some new technologies that we've adapted that weren't available in 2002 for some of the equipment we have to provide EMS care. So if you look here, this is the back door. This is kind of what it looks like here, and that is actually where you would operate the fire pump on there. You can see, we have bags, gears, there's actually heart monitor, and some other medical equipment there. Right there, we're looking at about $40,000 worth of equipment that has no place on the vehicle. It's essentially sitting loose. It's not real good for equipment, puts some extra wear on it, and it's also not good if we get in an accident, because it's not secured. But that's just kind of the situation we're in right now. A new vehicle would address these deficiencies we have So in the world of fire apparatus, it's, there's a few measures to try to figure out replacement when the correct time is. There's a couple things you can use. One is NFPA, which, if you're not familiar with that, that is essentially a global company that makes recommendations far as fire safety, not only fire apparatus, but everything that's fire-related. They are really the benchmark, and they put down the best practices. They recommend a 15-year timeframe for replacement for frontline fire apparatus, another five years to have it as reserve status. There's also another measure we use here. I use this one here. It's from the American Public Workers Association, and they use a point system to figure out where your vehicles stand. So it takes some of the arbitrariness out of there. So there's a lot of information. I'll just hit the high points. For every year of age, you add a point. For every 1,000 hours on the vehicle, you add a point. For the type of service of the vehicle, it's a scale of one to five. They, their recommendation is five is fire apparatus. So the recommendation goes, if it's a street sweeper, fire apparatus, it falls between one and five. Five is considered severe duty. Reliability, same thing, one to five. It's been a pretty reliable vehicle for us, considering that we've had it for, you know, 15 years. We put that at a two. Material costs for repairs and replacement has been pretty good on that. We give that a one, which is, you know, very low. Condition of the vehicle, we put that at a three. There's, you know, some of our normal wear after vehicle that is 15 years old and has 85,000 miles on it, you're going to have some wear on it. So we put that at a three out of five. You add all these up, and it comes down to our bottom total here. If you look at the very bottom line in yellow, anything 28 points and above is what they consider that you should immediately put that for consideration to replace. We scored a 34, so we're well above that Type IV condition on there. This is the engine we have at the West Side Fire Station. We call this Engine Two. It's a 2006, similar mileage to Engine One, 86,000 miles on there, a little less hours, at 7,500 hours. We also would like to replace this with, this would be replaced with our, we're called the rescue pumper. It would give us a little more room. If we look at this vehicle here, it is a, we call it a commercial cab, and this has even less storage than Engine One on it. This is the back seat here. There's actually three seats back there, but you can't really see them, because there's so much equipment in there. The fire seat, we have a heart monitor, EMS bag, our turnout gear, all of our advanced life support equipment on there. And this one's even really a tougher spot for us, because there's less separation between the driver and the front passenger. If you were to be involved in any accident, a lot of that stuff can go forward. And again, there's some very expensive equipment there. We've been forced to kind of put it here. It's the best place in the truck to have it right now. This vehicle's been a challenge for budgeting with our equipment operation costs on here. We've had some pretty significant costs on there. We had, and it's been out of service months, months last year. We've had it as far, had it to Flint a couple of times for repair, and Grand Rapids for repair. I think we put over $35,000 into this truck last year. We're real in a tough spot with it. Luckily, we replaced a pump in it, and that cost came in about $10,000 less than our original cost, because that was really going to put us in a pickle with replacement costs. But we did get that fixed. This one's been a challenge for maintenance with us, but hopefully, we have the big stuff done on it. This vehicle uses the same guide on here. 11 years old, so we give 11 points. Seven points for hours of operation. Type of service, we give it a five. It's a fire engine. Again, reliability, put that at a three, just because from this point on, we think it's probably going to be a little more reliable. I think we got some of the bugs worked out for the computer issues and the pump on there. If we'd have did this last year, it would have been a five. Material labor costs, we did that currently. We put that at a one, because I think right now, it's in pretty good shape. But if we did that last year, it probably would have been a four or five. Condition of the vehicle's two, it's in pretty decent shape. It's a newer vehicle. Our total points added up on here was 29. Again, 28 points and above is where you should look for immediate consideration for replacement. This is our reserve engine. Like I said, this comes out for greater alarms or whenever the vehicle's out for service. This is a 2000 Pierce, has 62,000 miles on it, 6,500 engine hours, and it's also to a commercial chassis. This is one of the vehicles we'd like to sell as part of our replacement plan moving forward. And one of the items we'd like to take, the council to take in consideration would be to move forward on the immediate sale of our tower. It's not a good fit for our department right now as far as deployment model. I think we could do a lot better if we were to sell this vehicle and use those funds in our replacement of our current Engine One and Engine Two. The value on this is actually a little low for the condition it is, because it's in pretty good condition. But the problem we run into is this manufacturer actually went out of business a number of years ago. So it has really driven down the secondary market value on this vehicle. If this vehicle was from another manufacturer, we would probably get another $75,000 to $100,000 on it. But we do believe that there's some interest in it. Talking to a couple of the truck brokers, there is some interest in this vehicle. This vehicle is, when you look at the conditions, real good, but there's been some issues with it. Most of it's been electronic, and it, too, has been out of service for, I could probably say, months last year, multiple months, three...
Three to four months.
Three to four months it's been out of service last year. So when we say out of service, means it's not to leave the station. It's not response-ready. And part of our plan would be to sell this, get any outstanding issues fixed, because we don't want to sell a vehicle that's not road-ready to someone else. We do have a mechanic lined up to come and knock out a couple of the issues we have on it. And this is one of the vehicles we looked at. We looked at a number of manufacturers, a number of vehicles over the last couple of years. We're really fortunate, because we have one of the biggest, I should say, we have the biggest trade show in the world for fire departments that's located in Indianapolis every year. It draws people from all over the world. I talked to someone from Australia, and there's a number of people from South America, Europe come to the show. It's the biggest display and educational seminar anywhere that's fire and EMS-related. So we looked at hundreds of fire trucks over the last two years, and kind of whittled it down to two manufacturers, and this style vehicle, which this style vehicle is similar in size to our current Engine One. It's just a little bit longer. It has a single axle on it. It has a 78-foot aerial device on it, which also has an elevated stream. So it's a multipurpose aerial device, so it can be used for rescue ventilation. It can actually use it for other rescue operations, such as a Stokes Baskets to lift someone from a position that may be over a wall and such. And it has the nozzle on there for elevated fire streams. One of the things, when we looked at trucks, too, was this vehicle is very, very similar to what we have specked out with the manufacturer. And one of the things we've done with this vehicle is looked at our current deficiencies with equipment, and better ways to improve our safety of our members, and get the best value out of our equipment by lengthening its life. Right there where the number two is, that is actually a door, and that's where we'd have our EMS equipment. There is doors on both sides that would allow us to actually secure our equipment from any type of movement from the outside. There would be electrical running there, so everything that takes batteries can be charged or has to be hardwired. And the nice part about that, it allows access from the outside and the inside. So if you're inside the vehicle, you can access your EMS equipment and from the outside. So that would solve one of the problems we have with a lot of our stuff just kind of being in the cab area. And that would let us also isolate our medical equipment from our personnel. One of the important parts of that is the cross-contamination. It's real easy to pick up some biohazards on our equipment, and a lot of times, cleaning that stuff on scene is not plausible, so we have to bring it back to the station to clean it. And obviously, if it's dirty, we do our best to try to isolate it from everything in the truck, but we're still bringing biohazard back with us. So that would be one way to help increase our firefighter's safety, is isolating that biohazard from our compartment. And that's also, not only for firefighters, but also for our public, too. One thing we really worry about is when we give tours and stuff, everyone likes going to fire trucks. You know, all the kids want to climb on there. So we have to be really diligent about preparation of our cabin stuff before we allow anyone in there, because the last thing we want to do is expose the public to anything bad. That would solve that problem there. That would also solve some of the issues we have with electronics, because in 2002, things that were battery-powered weren't really in existence like they are now. Everything is battery-powered, it has to be plugged in. So a lot of our stuff we modified in Engine One has been to run new power outlets and stuff to feed the battery for those equipment. Also, one of the pluses with this would be, especially in deployment for fire incidents, we would have an aerial device ready on the first arriving vehicle. Currently, we don't have that luxury. Even with mutual aid, we lose placement of that aerial device. So if we were to, we respond to a fire incident, we pull up with our engine, and then we have our second engine, we have other vehicles respond. It really limits some of our access with aerial our access with aerial device. So this would definitely solve some of those challenges we've run into. With the height, this is a little bit shorter than our current tower. But part of our diligence, we had the manufacturer bring this, this similar vehicle, same length, same chassis around. We actually went around and measured some places. We went down to Hollywood. At the end, there's a big curve down Home Offset. We checked that. We were able to reach the roof on that. We went to Gordo Steel, checked the roof on that. We were able to get to the roof on there. Went to Holiday Inn. We were able to reach the roof on there. And we went to Twin North Rossler, and we were able to reach the roof from some points on there. One of the things too, though, with the shorter ladder reach than our current one, is also placement. It's not necessarily a deficiency to go down to a seventy-eight foot as opposed to a hundred foot, because it's all about placement. A lot of our higher buildings have very limited access, and we could have a hundred-and-fifty foot ladder if we can't get close to the building. You know, it's still not plausible for us to reach it. So if you look at Twin North Rossler, it has a very small parking lot, and we can only essentially reach two sides of the building. So this, that worry as far as reach is, I think, lessened quite a bit with some of the work we've done ahead of time. So this would be what we're proposing to replace our current Engine Two. So this will go out the West Side Station. And this cab and the aerial device would have the same configuration. That was one of the things we really strive for, was have uniformity of vehicles. Although the paint scheme's slightly different, these are both from the same manufacturer. In this front cab, everywhere you see the doors there that you ride in is the exact same as the aerial device. So that would allow us to have uniformity of all deployment of our equipment. Everything would be the same place. When you had members that switch stations, everything would always be in the same place. Makes design a lot easier. So this would have a lot of the same positives that the Quint would. But one of the biggest positives this would be is this back part has greatly increased our storage space compared to our current vehicle. This one has around four hundred and some cubic feet of storage, and we're less than two hundred on our current engine. So it would essentially almost double our storage space while maintaining the same capacities. We would still have water on this vehicle. We'd still have seven hundred and fifty gallons of water on it. We'd still have the ability to spray foam on it. We still have a supply line on here. All of our hand lines would remain the same. But newer engineering has really made a lot of difference in these vehicles. And actually, this vehicle too would be the same size length as our current engine, and wouldn't have any problems fitting in the West Side Station. That's one of our challenges too, is that station's small as far as the apparatus bay is laid out, and it limits the size of the vehicle we can have in there to right around thirty-three feet at the max. I think this comes in at thirty-two something. So that would be right on par with giving us enough room in the station and not have to worry about that. And one of the things we were proposing is actually doing a dual order. This would actually bring us our replacement plan up a year, because originally, we were looking at doing a Quint one year, the next year proposing doing the engine. But after talking with our manufacturer, we realized that there's a lot of efficiencies and cost savings if we do a dual build. Just some of the benefits, just kind of highlight these, but we'll get more depth on a spreadsheet. You avoid some of the cost increases every year. I really talked to more than a few manufacturers. And two and a half to three and a half percent has pretty much been the industry standard for cost increases over the last few years. And that, you know, when you're talking, you know, a five-hundred thousand dollar purchase adds up real quick. One of the things that drives costs too is EPA mandates in the engines. A couple of years ago, we had some big increases because they changed the requirements in diesel engines. So a lot of the trucks went about ten thousand dollars plus. You're guaranteed to have identical parts because the cab configurations are going to be the same. So we'd have same, same engines, same lights, same cab. Everything would be the same. So we have to maintain less parts, skews. So essentially, if we have one light bulb in stock, it can go on either vehicle. Currently, we have, you know, every vehicle's different manufacturer, different make. So we have, parts is, can be a challenge. Less time needed for design inspection acceptance, because you're doing two vehicles at the same time, and each cab's the same. That cuts down significantly on the amount of time needed for the pre-planning from the company aspect and also from the fire aspect. Moving forward, we'd have a better resale on our value because, you know, we're still getting some life out of these engines on the secondary market. There's quite a number of departments that have to buy used apparatus. Ours are in good enough shape where we still have a really pretty decent resale value on those. Another bonus would be decreased maintenance costs. Like I said, our Engine Two, we put in, you know, thirty-seven thousand dollars last year. So we could offset some of the costs of the new vehicles with having less vehicle apparatus. We project that probably going on up to five years. New vehicles do come with warranties. They're kind of staggered, engines, paint, body. It's all, it's all staggered. Each one's a little bit different. It's just not like a five-year, you know, sixty thousand mile bumper to bumper. As I said, increased life safety and property conservation. Going to the Quint, I think, is probably one of the biggest advantages we can, we can, we can take, one of the biggest things we take advantage of. The amount of capabilities that provides us over having an engine is enormous. Uniformity of parts and service, I kind of hit on that too. You know, our maintenance division here, Dan has, you know, stacks and stacks of vendors we have to get parts from because they're all different. So we get down to the cost. You saw some of the other slides I had on there with some approximate cost. But these are the hard numbers from our manufacturer. What we did is, we actually, we went to the shows, we kind of looked at a number of manufacturers. We narrowed it down to two. We worked real hard at one manufacturer. They make a really nice product. Both these make a really nice product. And one of the things we didn't like about them was they have proprietary parts. So if you want to get a light bulb, you got to order it from them. You just can't go down to NAPA. This manufacturer doesn't do that. And with their proprietary parts, maintenance cost is a lot more expensive. I mean, you can, there's no way to cross-reference. If you need a light bulb and say their part number is XYZ, you can't go on the internet and find, try to cross-reference that. So that was one of the things that we were concerned with is, you know, five, six years down the road, if we're trying to do replacement parts, is we have to stick with them. Another thing was they are, I guess they call the premium brand in reputation. With that, comes, I think, a little bit of a premium price. A couple of the units we looked at were more than what we'd specked out for demo units. If you look over here, example would be Line Two, the E-Max Pumper. We had that priced out at our manufacturer here at four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. When we looked at our other manufacturer, they brought us a demo unit, which means it's used. It's still a new unit, but it's just been taken around to show in the departments. So it has miles on it. It's not custom built. It's, this is what we have. If you want to add stuff to it, you got to add stuff to it. You want to add striping, it costs money. That came in at four hundred and seventy-five thousand untouched, just delivered. So if you want to make any modifications, you want to add plugs or anything like that. We looked at a couple of our demos, and those were just a smidge above five hundred thousand. So I think that really kind of is looking back here at E-One. And also, E-One has been our custom pumper. It's been real good for us. The ladder, price on that is seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. And when I say the price on that, that has been a price that we went over. We had about fifteen pages of specs on this. We sat down with the salespeople for probably about a good five hours, went through about fifteen to seventeen pages of line items on there. Got rid of the, got rid of the wants, stick with the needs, what we really need to move forward, and try to get the best price we can. It's a lot of money, but we took, we took every item on there and said, do we really have to have that? One example would be just looking at the rims. If we went with our aluminum rims, give you a little more shine, that was about a six thousand dollar option. If we went back down to a metal rim, that cut four thousand dollars off the price of it. So we said, that's a no-brainer. Looked at a couple of things like standard was painting the inside of the cabinets. They're aluminum cabinet. There's no real need to have them painted. We looked at that. That's kind of a standard on there. That was five thousand dollar option. We just said, you know, we got aluminum inside now. We don't need to spend five thousand dollars on paint. What do you have on there? Some other smaller stuff. I mean, when you start to look at those line items, you have so many pages of them, a hundred, two hundred, five hundred dollars adds up real quick. That same thing, philosophy we took with both vehicles, since they're going to be identical, we transferred those over there. Those are probably about as low as we can find. If you kind of do a, just do a search as far as vehicles, you're going to find that five hundred thousand is usually about the starting mark, mark for an engine, and around eight hundred thousand is going to be the starting mark for, mark for a Quint. But we actually were able to reduce those prices a little bit if we were able to do a dual build, purchase together. And that knocked off a significant amount of money on there. That second line item down there, if we do a dual build, it's seven hundred and forty-nine thousand for the aerial device, four hundred and seventy for the engine. Building those at the same time knocks thirty-seven thousand dollars off the price. One other thing to consider too is there's actually a price increase coming in November with this manufacturer. Most of them do it at the end of the year. It's a three and a half percent increase. There's nothing they can do about that price increase. If you order a vehicle after that, you have the three percent on top of that. Comes out to about forty-two thousand dollars. I know it's a lot to take in at once, when sitting here, but I think we've came to a position where if we were to move forward this right away, before the price increase and do a dual purchase, I think we can save about seventy-seven thousand dollars, almost eighty thousand dollars in costs as opposed to delaying this.
If I might just summarize the financing end of it. And, you know, one of the things and Brent kind of hit upon it is, you know, if we were to go down this route, we'd be looking at a sole source recommendation from city administration with E-One for all the reasons that he had mentioned in his presentation. Candidly, the, you know, the Engine Two makes sense in the sense that we would be disposing and selling off the surplus apparatus to pay for that, along with the fact that we've already put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in reserve from capital improvements. Our plan is to put another seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand next year. So we're pretty close to paying for that, that new engine. During the budget last year, if you recall, we did a two-year budget. We put ninety thousand dollars to do installment payments that would be associated with the Quint. So, you know, we were, for all intents and purposes, ready to go. A little hiccup here with our largest taxpayer, as you know, with questioning the assessment. And so created a little caution on our end of it. But clearly, we were positioning ourselves to be able to go to, to come back to the city council with a recommendation to, you know, move forward with what was being proposed here. And so, you know, tonight, the intent was to introduce the idea, you know, you've got one other meeting before, you know, the November fourteenth date regarding their price increase. I'm hopeful I might know a little more by then what we're looking at. But clearly, we wanted to put this on the council's radar for consideration. And, you know, I think that, again, if it wasn't this little hiccup that we had, we were clearly positioning ourselves to move forward with the replacement of the equipment as was presented.
Thanks, Vince. Thanks, Captain Newsom.
Just give me about five more minutes here, just briefly.
You may not have five minutes.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
We have another topic, and that page there, the conclusion is within the packet.
Okay.
But I want to see if there's any questions. So maybe there might be some specific questions we have in council at this point. John?
Yeah, Your Honor, thanks. Vince, are you, and maybe this is for you and Ed, were you thinking of financing that with a purchase money, some form of purchase agreement, or how are you?
Yeah, the Quint was looking at a purchase installment.
Purchase installment plan?
Yep, yep.
I mean, I just looked at the numbers, and I'm sure Ed would go over this, but if you took a look at one point two-six-five million, the bottom line, and then we have a hundred and seventy-five in capital improvements, and I assumed a conservative value of selling the equipment at a hundred and fifty, just to be conservative, we end up with nine hundred and forty thousand over a ten-year loan. That would be around a hundred grand a year?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, potentially.
Okay. And that'd be for over a ten-year period?
Yeah. But we're also putting more money in next year's capital improvement program. That was, we're pretty close.
So, we're pretty close. Pretty close to your estimate of ninety thousand a year then, for both, 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 both vehicles.
Yeah, one being primarily financed with capital improvements and the sale of others.
The other one being so. So we're close.
Yep, exactly.
Counsel, my question is, there is some monies there too in the resale of our surplus equipment, once the new ones were delivered. There'd probably be well over a hundred thousand dollars in resale value of our Engine One and Engine Two, once the new equipment was taken.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
There's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars minimum in equipment that could be sold.
Other counsel? Just the last thing, I know that with anything, you get warranties in long terms. And I know that you, I thought I read it, but maybe it was something that was said about some of the, carry through with some of the existing. But I know there's been challenges also that you've worked through with the department. What do they, the fact that it's dual, it's same vendor, it's not having to go to proprietary parts, all those are all pluses. I'm just curious what they, what they come back with as it, as sales when they tell you long-term.
Long-term reliability, is that what you're pointing to, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, I look to our current, we currently have an E-One. It's been a real good truck for us. Very few complaints.
But with these that are proposed purchasing, the companies, do they say how long that they might, I don't know if it's not...
What's the warranty on them?
Oh, they do stagger them. They have, I think it's ten-year body, five years on engine trans.
One year on, and you can buy extended warranties too, but I don't, I wouldn't recommend that.
Right. That's what I was looking for, just to what kind of the framework was.
Yeah, it's because you, they're essentially assembling, you know, engines and pumps from many other manufacturers, and those have longer warranties just than the vehicle as whole.
Okay.
So there, you know, there is some, you know, warranty there to fall back on. But the reliability, we've been very happy. And one of the big pushes too was their service centers. They just opened one in Romulus. So it puts them real close for service.
Mayor, Vince, what, again, what are you looking at relative to bringing this back to council?
Probably next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm hopeful I have a little understanding with where we're at with our other financial issues. So I'm not sure. But, you know, as I said, for all intents and purposes, this was teed up to go as presented tonight with the exception of that, so.
Good presentation as well. I appreciate that. My questions may be more of the things that come after that aren't pertinent to this discussion tonight is getting prepared to make a decision at the next council. Just some follow-ups on some of the existing equipment. I can send those to you, and you can share them with council. You know, the echo unit we currently have, you know, I'm trying to see the interplay of the vehicles we have and how they may be an associative use or what we're using them for now, those type of things. But tonight's not the night. So I'll send those to you, and I'll send them to city manager as well, so you can kind of, and there may be other questions the council have regarding some of those. We'll make sure they get city manager it on to you, so you can kind of bring that back to us, maybe just a distribution back to council.
Yeah, good presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I was a little nervous, but thank you.
No.
Didn't show.
Vince, I know we're getting close, but I think you have time to maybe do a couple reviews here.
Yep, thank you. You know, in the past updates to council, I had suggested that, you know, consideration of demoing a couple of buildings that we own. One is three-seventeen East First Street. There's a house adjoining the current fire station on Scott Street. To be honest with you, the, our building department looked at it. You know, we may have to put some money into it. And I'm not sure, long-term, whether there's a value of keeping that building and having it, if we were to sell it, go become another rental house here in town. And then the other one is two-oh-seven East Second. So this is between, near the city parking lot. It's the parcel that we own there. And, and again, a similar situation where we may need to put some money into mechanical systems, and it begs the question, for what purpose? And so, just want your feedback, because since we're lining up to do a number of demolition projects, if we put that on the list, certainly we get a much better price for quantity in that. Looking around to see if there's any objections. If not, I'll put it on the list.
I see. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah. Thanks, Your Honor. Three-seventeen East 317 East First Street, I've been through it. Needs to go. 207 Second, I thought when we bought that, I thought the administration, this is like two or three years ago, said that wasn't in bad shape. Has it declined?
Might need some other, those that have been in it recently. I know that the utilization of it's been in relation to the garage mostly for some support, deployment of resources, the DDA and others, but I have not been in it for a long time. So, I'm trying to figure if, maybe we can get a report back.
I guess my thought on that was that house is really well-positioned with, between our police and our fire department. And we're bringing in new police PSOs and new firefighters and sometimes they have a hard time finding a place to live. Do we put a little bit of money in that? Do we rent that, we rent that out to our own folks so they're living in town rather than living outside of town? If it's in good shape.
I think maybe a closer assessment with maybe some mechanical or all the items that might be needed and then kind of go from there, come back with it.
Just a thought.
But I agree, the other one.
The other one's got to go. Yeah.
All right, I'll write, providing some back on the 207, a little more information.
Good.
Okay, thank you. The other item I had was just providing the city council with an update on a few items. Terry had alluded to it earlier with, we had some mold in the sand when we took the ice down out there. That's all been removed. The air quality's fine. But the next step going forward is last Thursday, we were out there with city staff, kind of prepping ourselves to start selling everything. And so, we've got three definitive steps that we're going to do. And I see Mr. Bentley, he's volunteers. If we go forward with this lease on the regular agenda tonight, has offered volunteers to help with some of the cleanup. In particular, we've got a lot of items that need to be disposed of that we just don't think have any residual value whatsoever. And so, we would probably avail ourselves of that offer, but that would be the first step. The second part is clearly there's a market and a lot of interest for the hockey-related items, the dasher boards, the bleachers, the scoreboard, the goals and what have you. We've got some of the flooring on the dry side with the turf that is available to put that out on the market and solicit bids. And we'd like to get that one moving quickly. In fact, I'd love to have this thing out to solicit bids here in the next, by the end of this week, to be honest with you. And the last part is, is that we'll probably just have an auctioneer come in for the rest of the stuff. When you go through the kitchen, there's some, you know, stainless steel sinks that meet health department codes with the three sink compartments there with that, you know, certainly the countertop. So, there's some residual value with those, but that's the plan for the multi-sports complex to go forward with it. But I think that, you know, certainly, I'd like to get it cleaned up and then put the other items out for sale.
Sounds as to what we've discussed in past meetings, moving forward unless there's any comments from council?
Comments.
Very well.
Yeah, the only difference was, I think, the auctioneer. I think that we'd get a better pricing for that because there's hockey stuff and then there's other markets for things, so. You know, we're undertaking an update of our zoning amendment and one of the things that we need to do is to have a council member to participate in that. I think the planning commission, I don't know if we've got those lined up yet, we do. And so, I think at that point, the team would be assembled. We just need to put a council member in place to round out the team for that.
I'd like to do that.
I'll help, too.
Okay. So, I think there's a way to get involved with the council. I think that's good.
Right? Good. The third item I had last is you have in front of you, item that we received from Extonet. This is for the distributed small cell antenna systems. We've talked about it in the past. There are seven locations here in the city of Monroe that are proposed, so you have a handout with all of the items that are there. We've reached a tentative settlement with them regarding the case that they filed before the Michigan Public Service Commission. And so, we're looking to have this on the agenda for November 7th for city council to approve. We've worked with them probably easily since the beginning of the calendar year regarding the height of their towers and their location. I think we got about it as good as we can, especially in light of the fact that there is some legislation in Lansing to, that'll probably be industry favorable. The conditions are these locations, $25,000 to the city for their engagement with, from an engineering standpoint and looking at a 20-year Metro Act agreement that we go along with that, so.
So, I guess, Vince, I'll ask because just haven't received this. I know the council will go through it if you want any comments back. Is that what you're looking for?
Absolutely. And if there's an interest doing a drive around, I'd be more than happy to go through where these locations are and a lot of the discussion and considerations that went into it, so.
Looking at the, just brief, looking at it right here as it was presented tonight, you can see map-wise, easy to locate and find.
Yep.
And I would say that if the council members have any inquiries or otherwise, please get ahold of city manager as indicated, he's looking to bring that back, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I see the locations, but what are, what's the pole going to look like?
Most of them are going to go on the existing.
Going on the existings?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Some of the presentations, we saw the very large poles.
Yeah, these are 120 feet.
Okay, all right.
And in a lot of cases, they act, one case over on the north side, over by, just north of Elm, they're, they actually are getting an easement from a private property owner so that it's off the street and not very visible, so.
Well, these, I appreciate the work that was already done because you're, John, you're correct, the poles they had presented were very much higher and were not even a consideration of using existing. And I think most that I see here is at least much more valuable than it was at the start.
I agree.
So, thank you, Vince.
Yeah, I think there is one location that does have a pole that they're going in over off of West Lorraine, but other than that, they're all attached to existing.
All right, so if there's any comments on that, just send the email to Mr. Pastu. We have about 12 minutes, so I don't forget anything further.
Your Honor, we have to probably end at 7:20.
7:20, so we have three minutes.
We give nowhere time to switch everything over.
Time's up. Great. Vince, any other, okay. I know that manager updates, that was in there, so if there's other things, we'll have to catch them later.
Your Honor?
Yes.
One thing I discussed with the city manager and maybe the council, and I don't know if they want to read anything else, but I had asked Vince if it would be, with all the projects that are going on, if the city administration primarily Mark and Annette, because they're the ones handling a lot of these projects, at least on a monthly basis, will put a summary together what the status is to keep council apprised of how the projects are moving through since we have so many things out there right now.
Talked with Annette. No problem, Mark. I don't see any problem.
I didn't want to burden, you know, at least once a month. I don't need anything more than that. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. In short.
Seeing no other comments, we'll close the work session and we have about 10 minutes for the council meeting.